Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, June tenth, school board meeting for the month of June. We welcome you and thank you for coming this evening. We do want to say that we're sorry that Mr. Williams could not be with us this evening. He had a death in the family, and that is why he's not joining us tonight. And our thoughts and prayers are with him. At this time, we're going to stand for the pledge and then have our application. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this occasion. We thank you, God, for the safe ending of another school year. We thank you for our graduates. Our teachers who poured so much into these young people that they may now go out into the world and just be youthful citizens. God, we thank you for this year. We thank you even for dealing with the death of students and now dealing with the death of a board member's sister and all the things. But you said in your word, and we know all things work together for good for them that know the Lord. You also said to be absent in the body is to be present with the Lord. We thank you for where they are right now with you. And now, God, we just pray that you continue to bless our board. Thank you for the success because it really comes from you. Everything comes from you. We just give you thanks and praise for that. Now, God, bless us as we're into the center of summer months and do things that we need to do to be prepared for the class of 2025. And we thank you for this board. Continue to strengthen them, keep them strong. Bless our staff. Continue to be with us. These verses we're asking you to pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Madison, do we have any registered speakers?
Is that Governor Jones Thomas?
Yes. Registered speakers, yes.
Oh, I don't see any now.
Okay. All right, moving along then to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the minutes from our May thirteenth meeting as well as a motion to approve our financial report from May.
I still move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Action agenda. I believe we are going to have Mr. Golden come up and look at the application for the VHSL participation. Good evening.
Dr. Tally has the application.
Got it.
All of you have it there. All of you got a copy.
Okay.
Superintendent, school board, head of school board needs to sign along with Dr. Dixon at the high school. That is for the VHSL. That puts us in all of their competitions that we have at the high school.
Okay. Do we need to know anything else? Just make a motion. All right, so the motion needs to be that it is okay for authorization for the chair to sign the VHSL application.
Aye, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And let me give it right back to you.
Travis.
Travis?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a little bit of Bill to it.
Well, okay. Moving right along. Dr. Vaughn, Title III application.
I'll find it fast. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to request the board's approval to apply for the Title III Part A Language for English Learners and Immigrant Students grant funds. We received last year fifteen thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, and we do level funding until the new allocations come out in October, November, and then we'll adjust that. And we use that for student support and academic enrichment and supporting effective instruction and family outreach for our L students. Currently, we are servicing one hundred and thirty-seven active L students and forty monitoring students, students being monitored. So that's the money we use for our program to supplement our regular programs.
Okay. So you're just asking that we approve the request?
And then Ms. Smith has the cover sheet for Ms. Gibbons and Dr. Tally to sign.
Okay.
We've approved it today.
That's probably in the stuff, okay.
Because we can't, we can't send it in till it's been approved.
All right. So I need a motion to accept the request for the school board Title III funds for that application.
I still move.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Federal Consolidated Application Funds, Dr. Downing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's federal funds night tonight. I'm requesting permission to apply for federal funds for Title I Part A, Title II Part A, Title Four Part A, Title V Part B Subpart II. I have a brief description of how we use the money for this programming. In Title I, our three Title I school-wide schools are Albert Harris Elementary, Patrick Henry Elementary, and Martinsville Middle School. Those funds are used to pay for class size reduction teachers, so we keep our class sizes no more than one to twenty, especially at the elementary level. But also funds our instructional coordinators at those three schools, our STEM teachers at the two elementary schools, and our add-in teacher at Martinsville Middle School. This also funds two paraprofessionals each for the elementary schools to help support the reading specialists in differentiating and addressing the needs of the students. Title II Part A is used to fund the retention, the signing and retention incentives at Albert Harris Elementary School as a hard-to-staff school. And then Title V is used to fund the incentives for Martinsville High School math teachers as hard-to-staff. Finally, Title IV Part A is used to fund the Go Tech class and STEM class at Martinsville Middle School, and then also professional development for social and emotional learning as well as the Performing Arts Academy. It helps provide stipends for that so that we could expand that into a year-round program. So the total is about one point five million dollars. That is an estimate. As Dr. Vaughn explained, it's based on what we received previous year, and then we get our final allocations.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Downing? About the programs or do we need to approve it each part?
Yes, if you don't mind. So usually I do a consolidated application. DOE has not updated the consolidated applications in several years, so they moved everybody to the individual ones. So you'll have a sheet for each grant as a separate grant.
Okay, so will you give me those titles so that we have it correct? So it's Title II?
Title I Part A.
One A.
Title II Part A. Title Four Part A.
Okay, very good.
Yes. And Title V Part B Subpart II.
Feel like I'm playing bingo. All right, since we need separate motions, I need a motion to approve Title I A.
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
An emotion to approve Title II A.
I still move.
All in favor? Give me a chance. Title IV A.
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I need a motion for Title V B II.
I still move.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Item four point four for Virginia School Board Association Policy Service Contract for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay. All of us understand the board's, the Virginia School Board Association, and the training, update on policies, and the ability to call when we need to, free of charge each year when we have various circumstances, and to get a, also to update us on policy on licensure and other things that are very important. So I'd like the board tonight to again, to accept membership in that. I think it's vital. I think even the legal aspect of it is very vital when we have a problem. And we received contracts this week, and we'd like permission to join in. And we've always been a member.
All right, I need a motion to approve the Virginia School Board Association contract.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We need to approve the superintendent's designees. Dr. Tally, since we do have, could you explain that situation just a little bit since the board members may not be familiar with that?
In my absence or being away, sometimes there's certain forms that need to be signed. And so I need the board's permission to appoint Dr. Angelie Downing, Dr. Cynthia Papal, Mr. Travis Clemens, as being able to sign in my absence documents. And they're always very careful with it. They always call me to make sure it's something I want signed. I've been very good with that. And I'd like to have those three people be able to sign in my absence.
So our first motion will be to give them permission to make the decision. Our second motion, after we've voted on that, needs to be the assignment of those three individuals. Okay, so may I have a motion?
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then may I have a motion for those three? Dr. Downing, Mr. Clemens, and Dr. Papal.
I still move.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Downing, Governor School, Montana, random. No, I rolled those two together.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sorry, I was trying, because you were so kind as to tell us who the three people were, so we did that together, okay.
Got you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a memorandum of understanding for the P. Montgomery School for Mathematics, Science, and Technology. This agreement would go through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
Just one second. When you said who the three were, so I said, wait, you had a second question. Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I thought that was the same thing. So you go ahead, and then I'm going to go backwards. I hate to do it.
And this is for twenty-five student positions at Governor School, and that we are assuring that we will continue our agreement with them, provide tuition, and just continue that partnership with Governor School.
So I need a motion to approve our memorandum of understanding with Governor School.
I still move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, go back. I'm sorry, I sold it on to one. We need to approve Dr. Tally assigning or reassigning any personnel and giving him permission to do so. And that's under four point six. I read it as saying that it was the three people who could make decisions when he went here. So that is my fault. So may I have a motion to approve Dr. Tally assigning and reassigning and transferring any personnel?
I make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're back on track, sorry. Mr. Tatum, VPSA resolution. I can't wait to understand what that is.
Madam Chair, in your, in your packet, there's a resolution. It's the resolution of the Martinsville City School Board of Martinsville City Public Schools declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more grants made by the Commonwealth of Virginia for certain expenditures made and/or to be made in connection with certain capital improvements. That's the resolution before you. Basically, what I'm here to present tonight, I'm not sure what all that entails, but my purpose tonight is to present to you the educational technology grants through the Virginia Public Schools Authority. And so the educational technology grants issued by the Virginia Public School Authority, the grants are distributed to school divisions and regional programs to improve the instructional remedial and testing capabilities of the SOL in local school divisions and to increase the number of schools achieving full accreditation. I'm going to add the language "and maintaining full accreditation." And the proceeds of the notes are provided to: one, establish a computer-based instructional and testing system for the SOL; two, develop the capability for high-speed internet connectivity at high schools, followed by middle schools, and then in elementary schools; and, three, establish a five-to-one student-to-computer ratio for high schools, followed by middle schools, and then in elementary schools. Just aside enough here, we are a one-to-one school division, so we far exceed what this was, the original intent of this legislation, but it is still what it is. The grant is for twenty-six thousand dollars per eligible K-12 school and fifty thousand dollars per school division. So the total fund, the total amount of the grant is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And then the local division is required to do a twenty percent match, which twenty percent of the one hundred and fifty-four thousand, the thirty thousand eight hundred, bringing the total, the grand total of the grant to a hundred and eighty-four thousand and eight hundred dollars.
Is that any kind to Steve Travis?
No, that's actual, no, that's, that's actual expenditures.
And won't you have that in the budget earmarked?
Yes.
Yes.
And so I ask for you to approve this resolution tonight. And I'll answer any question that you might have.
Anyone have any questions? All right, then I need a motion to approve the VPSA resolution in regard to technology that Mr. Tatum just approved. I mean, shared with the show. Presented, approved, yes, sorry.
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Wellness Regulation Update, Sheila and Dr. Preston.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we are not asking for anyone. But we are here to talk about our wellness policy. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of background history to what brought us here today. So in two thousand and oh-six, Martinsville City Public Schools adopted the wellness policy, which is JHCF, which meets the USDA Food and Nutrition Services Regulation and the Virginia Code requirements. And both of those requirements and the codes are in your packet. In two thousand and seventeen, the state released regulatory guidance for schools to consider as part of the policy. At that time, Martinsville City Schools drafted the regulations, but it was not adopted at that time due to several reasons, which kind of brings us to today. We realize that we do need more specific guidance regarding student wellness in Martinsville City Public Schools and its wellness programming. So that is what we've done. We've just created the regulatory guidance that matches our wellness policy, which is kind of an overview.
And within that overview, there were certain things that we had to consider prior to putting that nice little packet together for you. And we were given a checklist from DOE that we needed to go through and make sure that each one of these categories were listed and covered within that regulatory, within the regulations. Within those regulations, you will see leadership. You will see information regarding public involvement, school meals, foods sold outside of school meals, foods provided and not sold, marketing, nutrition education, nutrition promotion, physical education and physical activity, other activities that promote student wellness. Our triennial report, reference to the triennial assessment is in there, public update and information. And also included, along with the Virginia Code requirements, we had to include information regarding compliant fundraisers, fundraiser times, and fundraiser designated. And additionally, they wanted, or they recommended wellness topics such as farm-to-school activities, alternative breakfast models, school health advisory board, active transportation, healthy hydration, adequate meal times, physical activity, breaks in the classroom, community partners, staff health, and wellness programs, just to name a few. So we had a lot to consider, a lot to try to cover. Our completed policy, along with the regulations, will be made available to the public through several means, such as the student handbook will have a reference page added, the MCPS website, MCPS School Nutrition website with links to the policy, the regulation, and the triennial agreement will be made available to our public. Along with a copy of, a copy of the regulation and the policy will be available at each school so that schools can refer to it throughout the school year or as questions should arise. And our building administrators and school wellness teams will assist with complete implementation of policy and regulations at the building level.
Thank you for this document, for your hard work. I'm sure you all had a chance to look at it prior to the meeting because it was in our board dogs and our information. Any questions for these ladies?
Very thorough, thank you. Very thorough shot. I saw the memo when it first came out, and I remember some of the things you've done in the past. Thank you for just keeping it up to date. I know we still have some work. YouTube will make sure we do it. Thank you. Lot of time.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Golden? All right, if we don't have any, then I need a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-four Martinsville City Public Schools Wellness Policy. And regulations, sorry.
And regulations.
And regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now for the superintendent's brief report.
I don't have two pages. You know, it's a building director, guys. I need some slack.
He really does have two pages.
I don't have two. I will try to expedite time. Again, I want to thank everybody for the school year, attending a lot of things, scholarship nights, and I tried to see you guys' photos of, look clear of everywhere we were. I think Callie and I just fought each other everywhere I showed up.
We really should have carpooled.
Really. You're right. At least this year I didn't speak. Last year I did. Sorry, teacher. ELL night, which was wonderful. I met many of the parents. IELTS, the parents were wonderful. And just want to thank Tammy and them for putting that together in one spot. I thought that was very good. And the principals who came, they came. And to meet our Hispanic parents, mostly Hispanic, which is great. UVA Superintendent's Advisory Meeting, which was very good. We're focusing on next year. And you guys will be grateful to hear that artificial intelligence will be a big part of that next year because we're going to have to make some decisions about how much of that we're going to use and how much the students can use it. It's, we're, of course, you know, we're fortunate because technology is my strong suit, so we should be, we should be okay. Met with, I had to do it. Met with Harvard. You bet. Met with Harvard and talked about some things they want to do for the community and also suggested some things that need to be done. I'm very impressed with some of the members of city council, some of the advances like apartments, things they're trying to do, and hope that some of the businesses and Harvard will go on board and help fund it because it's going to be for the betterment of everybody. Getting this in today. And now I have to spend time at Yale unfortunately because my grandson's friends are there. So, you know, my loyalty is protected, but it's okay. It's a hard decision. Had to begin lunching, which was great. Thank Harvard, they came, the table was pumped. Superintendent's breakfast, we had Mr. Clark, one of my favorite young people, speaking, whom I've tried to adopt for years and then, and really did just a great job of talking to kids about college life. He was very plain. And I hope that they listen. That's all I can say, love. But that, that was great. Governor School attended that with Ms. Gibbons, and it was great. Clivey Showcase, that was cool. I had never been to one of those before, but to see the kids come in and the parents and the little kids, you always fall in love when you go to Clivey because your kids are so adorable. But they had a lot of gifts, and they had just an overflow crowd. Health insurance meeting, it looks like we had a pretty good year because it looks like we won't have a rate increase in that by itself is a blessing and for our employees, and we're really proud of that. All the transition meetings, the fifth grade transition at Albert Harris and Patrick Henry, the eighth grade at the middle school, all were full. And congratulations to these students, the parents, and those of us who are grandparents who saw them leave. The BPI Promotion Parade, which was very good. Never knew that nine o'clock would be that hot in the morning, but it was, it was good. And the kids came to the thrills. So I want to thank the city police and all our people who came, rescue squads, everybody that joined in to make it safe. Graduation, it was just awesome. That's all I can say. Really excited, attended well, were able to have it outside on the board. Think about possibly go to up next year on Pride Night. And that's something I think I've mentioned to you guys before, prior to the night graduation, be a little cooler. And again, we can still hold it outside because we have the lights and stuff to do it. Seniors walking the hall, I know the principals enjoyed that. Monday holiday curriculum work, teachers have been here already. I want you to know, they didn't just leave after school was over. They came a whole week and they've been working hard. I came in, I don't know how many people we have at ten actually, which is a lot.
On average, about seventy.
Okay, because the room was packed. And that's working on curriculum for next year. We, you know, when you look at our results, you're going to be pleased. They're really embargoed, we can't sell a whole lot, but our ten teachers and students have continued our nine-year streak, which is great. But we have a lot of work still to do. And so we're going to have to work very hard on reading and science. But again, another successful year for us. Our performing arts, we went to the awards, and Kea was there, forced me to take a picture. It was real nice. It, it was real nice. And of course, Callie was there, and we really congratulated Charlotte Hines. Went to city council meeting for all the budget readings. I've been to all of them. And I met with Reeve, of course. Travis and I have been monthly, and we're real pleased with level funding, which we think it's going to do what we need to do for this year. The senior lunch and job fair was cool. That was cool. It was the first time we did that this year. Actual jobs were here, kids filling out applications because again, everybody's not going to go to college. Some of them are on game for employment. And so they were taking applications on the spot. You saw the thing that was televised, also written up in the board. So we were real pleased. And then, of course, last but not least, we went and we met with the families of the two young ladies who were killed in that horrific accident. And I want to thank teachers who came out, students, I came to young women people to shallow wear the cross to show our support for the families. And again, like I said before, we've dealt a lot of death, but we feel fortunate because we know, again, that these things will happen. But I was so proud of the way people turned out to support our families. It was just tremendous. And that's it.
All right. Carol Agroof, thank you very much. Just kidding. Matters from the board. Ms. Blackwell, do you have anything to share?
I have nothing.
Mr. Anderson?
I just want to take an opportunity to thank everyone for the great year. It was a very positive year. There was a lot of great things that happened everywhere, all the different robotics things. That was nice to see new adventures, seeing everyone get to travel. That was wonderful. All the hard work from the employees and teachers and bus drivers, and everybody gives a hundred and fifty percent. And I appreciate that and appreciate the hard work everyone has given. I wanted to, I had a thought that left me earlier. Graduation, graduation went very well. Big M, thank you whoever put that together. It was wonderful to see it back the way it was many, many moons ago without showing my age. When I first started teaching here, we always did the seniors first. I think it is so important for the younger students to actually stay the entire time, see the seniors walk across, get their trophies, hear what activities they were in. I'm not sure we got all those, but they heard some of them have the opportunity to see what they need to work towards. And I think that's really important, and we've been pushing for that the last couple of years, and I'm so glad we did that. We still kept everybody only out for an hour, I think, and ten minutes maybe, but it was nice for them to have that opportunity so they can do that. Years and years ago, Big M was held during the day, and students six through twelfth grade were expected to be there. The fifth graders were the only ones that got out of that. The fifth graders were the only ones that got out of that, and we sit there during the day. It was hard to keep everybody quiet and be respectful, but it's nice that it's held at night so the parents can be there. But it's very nice for them to see what they need to work towards. And I think that's important. Graduation was hot, but it was great. And, uh, well, a lot of parents have expressed they would like to have it on Friday evening, and teachers have. And I respect that because it is a, a federal holiday weekend, and it would be nice if they didn't come to work and, you know, all that. So even if we can look into that, that would be great. Something else I hope we will look into is this year, election day is a large election day. It's, it's presidential election. I've already mentioned this to Dr. Tally. Some, um, of the educators spoke to me and mentioned it would be nice if it was a day off for everybody. It's already a day off for our students. I would love to see us work out so that we could have whatever instructional learning that I know we are getting, and I'm sure that it is imperative, and I know our folks are the most educated, top-notch. If we could maybe get that a different day, because it's just gonna be chaotic. It's chaotic for every school because every school has, it's a poll increasing. And I know it's chaotic for you all trying to get in and out, even if you run out to lunch or if you run out to give a, a seminar at one of the schools, you've gotta get through all the folks. And then when you get to school, you gotta fly out through all the people. So just trying to listen to what the teacher said. It would be nice if it was a day off for everybody and we get that wonderful instruction some other time. Just a suggestion.
We could do that.
Okay, just throwing it out there that it's a suggestion.
We're fine.
And, and I will say, Dr. Tally always says, and I've tried to make that my truth this year as your chairman, that I do put the teachers and the children first.
Always.
That's the most important thing to me, is to put them first and employees, because I've been there and I've been in the boat, and I try to keep rolling with you, and so.
You heard my speech this morning.
No, I missed your speech. Did you get one?
I said all of that, but yeah.
It's important, it makes a difference, and I, I have tried to do that, and I hope that
Thank you.
that that was, you know, there. So that's all I have to say. Let's talk about dates. Dates of importance. As, that started many, 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 many years ago, offices are closed on Fridays in the summer to help with electricity costs and everything, keeping the buildings not heated as long or air-conditioned as long, blah, blah. June nineteenth is a holiday, Juneteenth, July fourth is a holiday, obviously, Fourth of July. Tentatively, there is a school board meeting for July eighth. And again, the, the key word there is tentative. We'll see what life brings between now and then. So that's all we have for dates. Any unregistered citizens who would like to say anything? All right, seeing none. Communications? Oh, we're rolling. All right. Pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene to close session for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters: Discussion and consideration of the evaluation, employment, assignment, and reassignment of employees of the Martinsville City Schools as authorized by Section two point two, two, dash three seven eleven A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Good night. Have a great summer.